Oh, thank you.
I showed up around four thirty.
Holy cow.
I talked to all your friends.
Oh, whoa. Any of my friends there, or did they all leave me once I left?
We call the meeting in order? Rise for the pleasure of leaders.
Did he have a bottom side?
The United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Like, can we have real call?
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Nakko? Mr. Sheehan?
Yep.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson? Mr. Hogan? Mr. Getchir?
Yeah.
Curtis, anybody signed up for public appearance?
No, Mr. Chairman.
For any school committee communications? I reported the student representative Cam Camacosa from Lowell.
The environmental club has been meeting weekly to do various environmental service projects such as collecting recycling, planting flowers, and packing up reusable ink cartridges for refill. In the past month, the members have collected over two hundred and five pounds of recyclable materials from our school community. The students are proud of their efforts and the positive impact they have made in their environment. Student council hosted their first annual Pink Day and raised over one hundred fifty dollars for breast cancer research. They also hosted their first Halloween costume contest for students and staff, and prizes were given to the top five costumes. National Honor Society and the National Technical Honor Society have been busy this past month with community service and new member induction. On November ninth of twenty twenty-three, sixty-three new members were inducted into NHS and into NTHS during the annual candle, annual candle lighting ceremony, which celebrates outstanding students who represent the four pillars of membership: scholarship, service, leadership, and character. In addition, members have been volunteering to help out at local events such as the Drakehead Schools trunk-or-treat event and the Greater Lowell Parent Teacher Organization craft fair. They will also be volunteering at the Wish Project in Chelmsford into the coming weeks. Student Council and National Honor Society slash National Technical Honor Society are partnering to host a food drive to support end sixty-eight hours of hunger. And the Griffin Food Pantry, donation food boxes will be available in math classrooms and near the Culinary Cafe throughout the month of November. The Educators Rising Club has had a strong first quarter in both planning and member turnout. Their vision board for the year includes touring UMass Lowell School of Education and Pittsburgh State University, as well as participating in local, state, and national conferences and competitions. Most recently, students earned their first micro-credential, which required these future teachers to analyze the topic of classroom culture. As a part of the credential requirements, members examined strategies and practices that skilled educators must implement to support a sustainable and equitable classroom culture. The freshman and sophomore class held a successful butter braid, bread, and lemon pies fundraiser this past month. Over sixteen hundred dollars was raised to offset the costs of future events and activities. In addition, they are planning their next event, a joint outing to Chunky's to see the new Wonka movie. The junior planning committee hosted a success, a successful junior prom on Friday, November third, at Lenzies in Drakehead. Almost three hundred students attended the event and enjoyed the Hollywood glamour theme and the entertainment provided by Base DJ Entertainment. GSA hosted the Massachusetts State Leadership Conference, State Leadership Council Northeast Regional Mark Meeting here at Greater Lowell Technical High School on Thursday, November ninth of twenty twenty-three. Students were able to network and learn from GSA members from other schools while advisors attended professional development with their counterparts from schools in the region. This event always provides a great deal of inspiration for both students and advisors, and they are looking forward to implementing what they have learned here in the coming months. Skills USA's school-wide programs are up and running with the kickoff meetings taking place for all students during their shop week. This year's goal is to have one hundred percent participation schoolwide and increase our medal counts in all levels of competition. For their first event, the organization hosted a tech or treat activity for the preschoolers and are following that event up with Tech Talk Tuesdays. Each Tuesday, a few of the big kids visit the preschool to share what they do in shop and what they be can, what they can become one day. Skills USA also held their annual officer installation ceremony on November second of twenty twenty-three, with ten members taking oaths of office. As a part of their training, the newly installed officers will be attending the Skills USA Fall State Leadership Conference held in Marlboro, Massachusetts from November nineteenth to the twentieth of this year. In total, this fall, in total, the Fall Griffin teams captured five CAC League titles: Girls and Boys Soccer, Girls and Boys Cross Country, and Cheer, to go along with four state vocational tournament championships: Girls and Boys Soccer and Girls and Boys Cross Country. This year, our unified basketball program followed up last year's undefeated campaign once again, running the table unbeaten during the regular season. It was an amazing effort by all the athletes involved, and we look forward to many more successes. The competitive dance team has been preparing all fall for the upcoming competition season, with their first performance being on November fifth at the Endicott Invitational at Endicott College. The team also performed alongside members of the unified dance team at our home Unified Basketball Games. Field hockey continued to grow as they embarked on the year three of the program. The team fielded a solid group of players that competed hard in every contest. With the vast majority of the team being underclassmen, the future looks bright for the Griffin field hockey. The boys and girls soccer teams had tremendous success this fall. Both teams were crowned CAC League Champions, state vocational champions, and qualified for the MIAA Division Three State Tournament. Cross country ran yet another year of successful campaigns. Both the girls' and boys' teams captured the CAC regular season title, the CAC League Meat Championship, as well as the state vocational meat championship. Golf had arguably their best season in the program's six-year history. The teams secured the most match wins in program history and followed that up with solid finishes at both the CAC and state vocational tournament matches. The team also fielded the largest number of participants and was able to run a number of JV matches this fall for the first time ever. Girls volleyball had a successful season. The team netted sixteen wins on the year and qualified for the MIAA Division Three State Tournament. The cheer team did a tremendous job this season, placing first at the CAC League Competition on November fourth. The team also qualified for the Division One Regional and State Competitions. Football will look to finish strong as they head into their holiday clash with Lowell Catholic on November twenty-second. The team will overturn a number of key players and should be a force in the CAC in the seasons to come. The game on the twenty-second will also serve as the grand opening of the brand-new Griffin Athletic Complex.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron.
Thanks, Cameron.
Appreciate it.
Great work.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you too.
Happy Thanksgiving, Cameron. Thank you.
You're free to go.
Have a great night, everyone.
You too.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from October eighteenth? So move. Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the reading of the law?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes. My motion to approve the expenditures is four million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, forty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes. Do you want to report to the general counsel?
Don't look that way.
Turn the meeting over to superintendent.
Thank you. The first item on my agenda this evening is the Cooperative Education Report, which is in your packages. The report you were provided indicates a hundred and eighty-five senior students participating in all cooperative education program as, as the end of October. However, I'm happy to report that to date, there are a hundred and ninety-six senior students out on co-op, which is thirty-five percent of the class of twenty twenty-four. Again, always thank you to Stacy Perezant and our new co-op coordinator, Brian Jones, for the work that they do to get our students out on co-op. The next item on my, on my agenda is two separate, I'll be looking for two separate approvals for donations. The first is a donation of a Turbo TGM fifty RS cooler for Mr. George Hickey of MIT Lincoln Laboratory with an approximate value of six thousand, five hundred dollars. And this item will be used in our new field house once it is completed. So I'm looking for an approval.
We get a motion to approve the, uh, donation of the cooler?
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
The next item, uh, donation item is twenty boxes of stone works of cultured stone with an approximate value of twenty-five hundred dollars from Essex Technical High School as a result of their closing their masonry program.
My motion to approve the donation of masonry blocks.
So move.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
And next, I'd like to invite our Director of Technology Enrollment and Information, Lisa Martinez, to provide the committee an update on enrollment. Welcome, Lisa.
Is everyone tonight? Hello. For our, our October one enrollment report, I just wanted to state that we have a total of twenty, uh, two thousand, three hundred and fourteen students for a total enrollment. For that was reported in our October one, uh, state report. Hold on a minute. That make the moment?
It's on. I'm sure it's.
On?
It's just.
Oh, it usually, it usually, it usually have that. Oh, it's on the first. There we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, so that was, uh, so we have five hundred and eighty-one ninth graders, five hundred and seventy-six tenth graders that we reported, five seventy-seven eleventh, and I believe it says five fifty-nine twelfth graders. And then our special population twenty-one, which gives us twenty-three fourteen. And that's an increase from, from prior year. If you look at both, you can see the difference in, um, in the, uh, yeah, the amount of students from, went from two, twenty-three oh three to twenty-three fourteen. And the reason for that was, uh, we had, um, more of the students that stayed at the school this year. I think with COVID, um, you know, certainly behind us quite a bit. Many of the students were not as, um, were not moving, and they stayed in the school. We also made a conscious decision to, to try to, um, bring in tenth graders where we had some open seats so that we could accommodate more students who wanted a technical education. And we also wanted to decrease, um, the amount of students in the exploratory in the ninth grade, which were overpopulated. Okay, does anyone have any questions?
No.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Short and sweet.
Hey. Lisa, actually, if you would stay?
Sure.
The next item on my agenda, I'd like to ask Lisa to remain and invite, uh, Chris Fody to join us. Chris Fody is our Director of Library, Media, and Professional Development. And they're here to talk about our new technical program spotlight videos that they worked very hard on over the last, I would say, two years with an outside company to produce these videos.
Oh, yeah, we looked at some of those, you said there's some of those.
Yeah, did.
Well, we're excited to unveil our, our new spotlight videos, shop videos, technical program videos, and for all twenty-three of our, our programs. What's kind of exciting about it is that we also are going to be having them in, in multiple languages. So we're excited to show you and, uh, kind of some, some of, uh, some of the videos. And how that came to be is, Chris, um, why don't you tell them about how you were, um, it started actually with some of the, uh, shop videos?
Um, so from, we started with a couple, kind of just basic and going into, I'm not sure what's going on. I'm sorry. Um, sorry, um, so we started with just sort of some basic going in kind of informally and getting some shots and, and people really, um, responded to that and being able to see what was going on. And, um, sorry, it's very distracting and like trying to figure that out. So, um, and then when the pandemic came about, it was much more important for us to have an online presence and be able to communicate with our, um, our sending communities from home and from our school, um, and being able to showcase all the amazing things that happen here and really spotlight the amazing educations that are, um, available in each of our twenty-three technical programs. So as we kind of continued, um, with that process and realizing we really needed much more, we really needed, um, a more robust, um, programming throughout for each of the, the, the technical, um, programs, being able to really showcase them. We needed, um, more help.
Yeah.
We needed really some collaboration.
And with the new branding and making sure that everything was sort of cohesive, um, with the new branding that we, we brought out, uh, the past year, and we want to make sure everything was, um, in, in uniform. And also, we were getting quite a bit of, um, feedback from, from, uh, enrollment and, and the, the going out and recruiting that people wanted to see the actual, you know, programs without having to come into the school to see the program. So this sort of gives everybody that really a snapshot of what a day in the life is. Thinking maybe we need to, into the settings or whatever. That's okay. Might have to look at the settings to see if we can get into that. Take a quick look and we'll, we'll try to get them up there. And what was, in, as part of a grant that we actually had from Desi, we were able to use some of that, uh, funding to also have the, them translated in, uh, four languages for each program. Um, so.
Having a little technical difficulty.
Little technical difficulty at the moment. Let's see. Input is detected.
It was just working right, like everything was, okay, there we go.
Give it a try. Yeah, so actually, what, what we also could, uh, talk a little bit is about, um, what's, what made it very interesting is, um, the, the traffic on our website. Before that, we never had more than a thousand people, um, look at our website within a given month at the highest, you know, over the past, you know, uh, you know, five years or so. And as soon as we uploaded those videos, um, that month, it went from a thousand to sixteen eighty-one. So it was a huge difference, um, when, when we were actually looking at that. And so far, as of, uh, that was, as of today, as of today, we had a total of, um, five thousand, two hundred and six hits to actually watch the videos. So, I mean, that's just a huge number of people, um, coming to view those programs. So what we would like to do is show you, um, one of the programs, and, uh, what we're gonna do is go to that carpentry one, because we also have that in multiple languages, and so that's kind of exciting. So we have them in four languages. This is an example in carpentry, but, um, they're in the midst of translating them all. There will be four languages for each of the, of the, um, of the technical programs. So we'll start with the first. In English, let's show them.
Yes.
Where you can manage everything and anything.
Many of the leaders on today's job sites got their start in carpentry at Greater Lowell Technical High School, our Carpentry Program.
Team of their own, you'll be handed the tools you need right away. You'll learn the basics of how to safely use portable power tools and stationary machinery, from circular, mitre, and table saws to portable drills and impact drivers. You'll alternate between theory and academic classes with many opportunities for experiential learning through hands-on projects, from erecting staging and house framing to roofing and siding and exterior and interior finish work. Students will also learn to read and interpret professional planning documents like construction plans and blueprints and to become familiar with building codes and the inspection process. During your junior and senior year, you can take part in our co-op program, bringing what you've learned into the real world while working for top local companies. And our students earn more than a wage. They can also earn twenty different industry-specific certifications, ranging from proper and safe use of equipment to extensive training like OSHA thirty. Real-world experience and certifications that mean you'll be ready to take on your career the day you graduate. Some of our graduates go on to college to pursue degrees like construction technology or management, but many of our students choose to go straight into the workforce as critical members of construction teams, from the roof to the foundation. And they can further their education right on the job through an apprentice program offered by the Carpenters Union. Joining the union opens doors to massive projects in Boston and beyond. As you gain more on-the-job experience, there are a whole host of roles you can take on. The possibilities are endless, and the building trades are in high demand. Join our Carpentry Program, pursue your passion with confidence, and launch your career in construction.
That's cool. That's awesome.
Yeah.
It gets.
Yeah.
And, um, we'd like to just show you one other, uh, from one other, uh, program. And, uh, we thought we would do culinary since we had a nice meal today.
Sure.
One of the best shops going, right, Paul?
Yeah.
Which one that went for you?
Really, come on. You didn't think I was gonna take a shameless plug?
Fresh up, I go into.
Ball in this one?
Consider turning your passion from cooking into culinary arts. At Greater Lowell Technical High School, our culinary program prepares graduates for many roles across the food service industry. As a student here, our experiential learning program will invite you to explore the dining room, the bakery, and of course, the kitchen. You'll first learn the basics, from food safety and sanitation to knife skills and weights and measures. Right away, your work will support the artisan, our student-operated restaurant, offering patrons fine dining in a relaxed setting. The menu alone will make your mouth water. Then, you'll tackle new cooking techniques and learn about restaurant service and function planning. Our advanced chefs enter a commercial kitchen and take on the a la carte experience, including menu costing and development and techniques for preparing meat and fish. Our kitchen is accredited by the American Culinary Federation and is equipped with all the tools required for professional food service, making it possible for students to cook up delicious creations across a variety of styles and cuisines. Our students also earn certifications required to work in professional food service. And then, it's time to turn up the heat in the real world. During junior and senior year, you can take part in our co-op program, working in the kitchens of companies like Aramark, Four Oaks Country Club, and Primo's Pizza. Some of our graduates go on to college to pursue degrees in culinary arts, but many of our grads head straight to a professional kitchen, first in entry-level positions and then in leadership roles in food service and management. The career possibilities are as endless as the cuisines. Food service professionals often have their hand in sales, research and development, and teaching. Join our culinary program and turn mouth-watering meals into a career you love.
So this was a truly a collaborative effort with, um, staff and, um, with staff, students, and, uh, the media technology department and our, our technology department as well. So we hope to have, um, a co-op one, uh, as we're working on that, as well as a whole school, um, video as well, in multiple languages.
This was all done in-house?
Um, this was not all done in-house, we used an outside, um, company.
Well, so, yeah, it was done by an outside company, but all, everything was filmed here.
Right, yes.
So everything was filmed here.
Does anybody have any questions?
That's beautiful.
Well, I think I just have one comment, you know, I, I know we have an open house and a lot of parents come and students come and they sort of get a feel for what our school has to offer. But I think sometimes, you know, their significant other, the, the, um, uh, the sibling of, of a student that may want to come here or, uh, another parent couldn't show up to the open house. And they can sort of start talking about what they saw, and now they can go on our website and see what these, uh, offerings are, which really shares with the public, um, how much we can go ahead and prepare their kids to, uh, be job-ready, work-ready, and have a career, uh, once they leave here. So outstanding work. I mean, we haven't seen anything like this, except for a few years ago, you know, we, we started with a pilot four, if I remember correctly. But now to have all our shops is really, you know, um, outstanding. So, great work.
I think, I think a takeoff of what Mr. Bahu was saying would also be nice to show one of the open house itself, to see the people walking around and, you know, and, uh, you know, just adding on, adding on. I, I, when, uh, the superintendent sent us this, uh, I, I started looking through some of those. It's very impressive, because a lot of times, you know, we're outside, people are asking us, you know, what about a particular technical area?
So now you can refer them to the website where they can look at the videos?
Click on it, and like it's in languages, if it's different languages, you know.
And now some parents might sort of just start watching them and say, hey, this would be a good option for you, this may be a good option for you, or this one, and then somebody else might pipe in. But the excitement of really putting in application here at Greater Lowell Tech is exactly what, you know, these videos will bring, so.
You're really, having them translated gives so many more people access, um, again, so.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
So thank you, Lisa and Chris, for a great job, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Great job.
So, my next item, I'd like to ask Chris to remain, who's going to, uh, discuss with you tonight, and will need approval for our collection development policy. Yes?
I'm just coming before the, um, committee to ask for approval for the, the policy, which is in your packet. Um, and if, um, anyone had any questions or?
Do you want to talk a little bit about what the policy is?
So, um, sorry. So, um, the collection development policy is the process of building a library collection to meet the needs of the students and the staff in a timely and economical manner that, um, includes criteria for selecting resources, assessing the collection, weeding, which is removing any obsolete or damaged materials, um, preservation of, um, any special collections we may have and deciding appropriate formats for the collections. So we've really expanded into, um, offering more electronic and online formats so that we can, um, provide a more robust experience, um, for the students and their independent reading time and, um, independent resource use, um, but also in conjunction with curriculum, um, support and development. So, um, the four, um, main reasons for why we provide, um, collections, we, that a school, um, develops a collection development policy, is, um, for guidance and direction, it provides, um, for staff, educators, and administrators regarding the selection and de-selection of materials, the consistency in the decision-making, so we're always using the same criteria, um, for that process. It helps maintain a focus, um, for the collection that it's aligned with the educational goals, um, and objectives of the school. The transparency and accountability of, um, the library's operations, it sort of outlines the processes used for selecting and de-selecting the materials, making the decision-making process more visible to community stakeholders. And resource allocation, effective allocation of, um, budget and staff time. When we're defining the criteria for selecting the materials, the library can be informed, can make informed decisions on how to allocate the resources, um, for a well-balanced and diverse collection that we're representing everybody's needs and, um, preferences throughout the entire collection.
Any questions for Ms. Fody on the collection development policy? So we'll be looking for an approval.
Motion to approve.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Hey, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And that's the end of my. Oh, I'm sorry, I just, Mr. Barton, I'd like to invite Mr. Barton up. Mr. Barton, uh, to provide, uh, some information, and we're looking for an approval regarding out-of-state travel request. So, Mr. Barton?
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, the only item on, uh, my agenda here is to ask for approval for three individuals, Cassie Fenland, Kara Thiel, and Pat Couliard, to attend the 2024, uh, World Softball Coaches Convention in Connecticut at the Mohegan Sun from January twelfth to the thirteenth. The total cost, which includes registration, hotels, costs, travel, and meal allowance, is two thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So I'm looking for approval for them to attend this coaches convention for softball.
So, um.
Can I have a motion? Second?
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Sure.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Getch?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And that was the last one I could want my issue back.
You get the report of the business manager.
Thank you.
What up, Mike? All right. I'll start tonight with, uh, following from the last, uh, meeting. We had, I gave you a little bit of a rundown about a potential project with, um, C-Power, um, for a battery backup system here at Greater Lowell Tech. Um, and tonight with me is Phil from C-Power. Um, so he's here to answer some questions, give you a little bit more depth on the project possibility, and then, um, I'll take it from there. So with that, Phil?
Yeah. Well, nice to see you guys. Nice to see you guys here. Um, let me turn this off. Whoa. Yeah, so, as we're figuring this out here, um, first, um, you guys are in the programs with us today, actually. So a couple of times during the summer, you guys get notices to shed back usage, uh, during peak stressful times on the grid. And, uh, Mike and his team has been, have been curtailin' for years now. So first, thank you for doing your part to kinda help safeguard the grid from these outages by scaling back to certain times of the year. So, you guys have been doing that, and you guys have been really successful, and you save a lot of money. And so, so kudos to you guys for doing all that for the school, um, and, and for the grid. And so, uh, see, I already log and everything in there. Okay, so, a- as we, as we, um, so, one thing I, I always talk to Mike about is, uh, is what's next? What can, what else can you do to help, to help the grid and help protect the grid and, and, and do the next thing that's good for energy technologies? And, uh, oh, one day we'll get there. Um, but I, I talked to Mike about, about the opportunity of energy storage and, uh, and batteries. And New England's an interesting place right now. Um, half our power plants use gas, and, um, and there are gas pipeline constraints here. So when you have, when you have pipeline constraints and you have such reliance on gas, but you don't have enough gas to get to power plants, you get in some very unique situations in New England. And all the, there's so much solar and wind that's entered the market here. And we love solar and wind, and it's really helped the New England grid. But, when you have a huge reliance on gas, and yet there's, there's potential gas surges, and there's so much reliance on solar and wind, spoiler alert, it's not always windy and it's not always sunny, right? So there are times of the year where you're reliant on all these renewables, but it's not available. That's why energy storage, it's not if energy storage is coming to New England, it's when. And right now, there are heavy incentive programs for behind-the-meter battery systems, and we're gonna go through that today. And so, just some, some quick background, uh, C-Power, we've been doing this for twenty years, managing sites. And, um, our parent company, LS Power, you might not know who they are, but they're one of the largest battery companies in the country. They actually installed, uh, more, most recently, they installed a three hundred and thirty-megawatt battery in Wavenswood, New York, a football-field-sized battery. So, these are, these are merchant utility-grade batteries. These are gold standard batteries that Raven, that New York City's using, um, LS, uh, LS Power's installed. And they essentially gave us a fund, and they said, hey, C-Power, we wanna start investing in smaller battery size for behind-the-meter type sites. And they said, well, you'll, you work with behind-meter facilities like yourself, how can we figure something out? So LS Power actually gave us a fund where they said, hey, we, go look around and find people that are good fits, and harness the programs that are available in each one of these regions. And right now, Massachusetts has some of the most ex- most extensive incentives for batteries in the country right now, interestingly enough. So what we modeled from, uh, when we worked with Mike on was, was a no-cost battery solution, where we would install a battery at no cost to you, and essentially, you guys would get all the on-bill benefits, 'cause these batteries charge overnight, discharge during the day to help with some bill mitigation, as well as resiliency. These batteries have the ability to kick in and subcycle, which is a millisecond. So if there's some type of blip, I know, uh, Mike said there's, sometimes there's blips and some signs for short-term outages, these batteries are there to kinda help, help get through that, so you won't even know what's going on. And those blips have been really helpful for a lot of people to stop in some of these shorter-term outages. And we would potentially handle the system design, the permitting, the installation, um, working with all the state fire codes, because we have to work with the local, the fire departments, make sure this is safe to, for these to run. That's a key piece of our process here, and we create a turnkey process. So, i- in regards to, in, in regards to, we, we, just to cut, so kinda a quick analysis here. Oh, it's going down. Let's try that. So, just so you kinda have a process here, we analyze your load profile. That dark blue line is your load today, um, and we modeled a battery. And your battery, if a battery was a fit here, that would be the light blue line. So essentially clipping some of your peaks, and there's some, there's money saved doing that, when, so it saves on your energy costs. And then the next thing we did was look at your, look at your school, looked at where could we install this battery? That was a proposed site based upon how close to your transformer it is, but there's still some work to do, so it's not finalized by any means. Um, but we're looking at a, a one-point-eight, three, uh, three-point-seven-megawatt-h battery, which means that it covers your facility for about four hours. I mean, so if there's some type of issue, battery's gonna kick in immediately and, uh, protect your facility from, from any type of outage that could happen here. And, and I know this is kind of an eye chart here, but we ran, but based on all the numbers we ran, um, we think that a battery of that size, we could save on your national grid bills upwards of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars over the next ten years. And then on your capacity charges, which is a big portion of your supply bill, save you about six hundred thousand. And again, so, the battery, the benefit of the battery could be about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And a battery of this size maybe costs around three million dollars. But we're able to use, again, we're able to use the really lucrative incentives and take on that risk and then earn that, earn the cost of that battery back over those program incentives over ten years. So, so really, it makes, it makes, it makes a setup where everybody's happy. Where LS, uh, where C-Power's happy because we get another site, uh, to put into our program to help safeguard the grid. LS, LS Power's happy because they can invest in another battery. And you guys are happy because there's on-bill benefits, there's resiliency benefits. And the best part is, it, it, it models right now that there, there, there's no out-of-pocket cost. So it's, uh, it's something where kinda everybody could be happy in the, in this prerogative here. And some people ask, well, how do we, do you have to press, do you have to go and press the battery every time you need it? We've actually built a machine learning AI algorithm called Enerwise to manage this battery. So it's gonna work autonomously in the background. If you guys need to use it for any issue that happens, and you have availability to use it, but the battery's gonna be charging and discharged in the background. And really, so one last slide here, we ca- we keep it under ten minutes here. Um, so, so what's the next step? So, um, am I ready to offer you a battery today? And the answer is what? We'll know. Um, the process here is everything looked good, and, and if this looks like it's of interest, we have to put it through a feasibility study. And we have to work with National Grid to make sure it's safe to install a battery and interconnect with their grid.
That's protocol.
We have to do it. And unfortunately, it takes eighteen months. It takes eighteen months to work back and forth with National Grid, make sure the battery can properly connect with their grid, 'cause they have to look at all these different things. If they get all these batteries inflowing into their grid, the tran- uh, things will explode, and it's terrible. So they have to make sure it's sa- that, that a battery can safely be installed here, and they might give us some transmission costs or different things to do that. And, and our, uh, the, the, the meeting here today is, if you wanna take that journey with us. And the numbers looked interesting, and our job would be to then, eighteen months from now, say, hey, we've done all the homework, and here is the finalized numbers. The hope is that they're close to these, but there's just stuff we just don't know. We don't know if they're gonna cut, they're gonna charge us five million dollars to upgrade your transformer to do it. But the odds aren't low, but we have to do this homework before we can officially offer it. So today is not really, hey, do you want a battery? Today is more of, if this looks interesting and intriguing, would you wanna take the steps to study this with us and take this journey? There's no guarantees it will work. We have to work with the utility and figure out if, if they're going to allow it. But from everything we've, we've done some homework on, it looks pretty compelling. And right now, we have about, this is a one, one-point-eight-megawatt battery. We have about a hundred and thirty-seven megawatts of batteries in the design phase right now. And we've just, uh, we just did a, probably a twenty-million-dollar purchaser for batteries for a couple of sites in Connecticut, uh, at the end of this month. So, we're quickly becoming the largest, um, battery operator in New England.
Is, uh, is there anyone in this local area, another school, an industrial?
Yeah, what's funny, um, you, you, the, 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 the student that's, uh, um, we're actually working with, uh, Pittsburgh State on demand response, as well as UMass Lowell. UMass, I actually have a meeting with UMass Lowell to talk about this very thing, um, a- after Thanksgiving. In regards to batteries in the area, it's still so new, but we're managing a battery over at UMass Amherst. Um, and there's also a battery at UMass Dartmouth. And, um, and actually, uh, we're managing a battery at Arnold Arboretum. They installed a Tesla battery a couple of years ago. Um, so right now, we're finding batteries that were kind of, that, that were brought here that didn't, our expertise is in monetizing batteries, so we help in there. In regards to this model of us owning them, our first batch are coming up right now.
Are the batteries made in the US?
Unfortunately, there are, eh, eh, right now, there are no batteries right now that meets that US forty percent ITC requirement. Um, we would work with all the tier-one suppliers like Tesla, um, BYD, um, Paddle, um, is a more Canadian solar. Those are the ones, again, with most competitive prices. It used to be just be Tesla, but everything was so expensive, and now what's happened is more competition. And that's brought the battery prices down. When it was just one supplier, it was just not economical. But now you have some competition, and you have the, all, everybody, when these battery, when these battery companies compete, then it's, it's, it's better for all of us.
So there's eighteen-month possible feasibility?
Yeah.
C-Power, you take care of that, you cover the cu- there's no cost from the school?
No cost to the school.
Thank you.
So we just say, okay, do the feasibility study for eighteen months. Decide it's not gonna work out, or else that we bolt pot out of it, you know?
That's, that, that, and then the, the feasibility study, if we find any showstoppers, I mean, we don't wanna waste time.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's why we're asking this. No, I get, I get this, see, I work for Verizon, so I get the back, the power going back in the grid. They gotta make sure that battery's not gonna, you don't want someone working on bottom half and getting lit up. They don't want the back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I get the eighteen-month gap.
Yeah, and then if we, and if we find any showstoppers and say, hey, it doesn't work, then we wa- walk our separate way. I mean, not walk our separate ways, but still work with you guys on load chain demand response, but maybe this opportunity will outfit.
Just said, no harm, no foul.
But if we, but if we choose, excuse me. If we choose to move forward with this feasibility study, and everything seems to get ironed out and it's ready to go, will we still have an option to say, thanks, but no thanks?
Yeah, so that's, that, perfect, that's the next I was gonna say. So, so, um, there's an LOI, it's called a Letter of Intent, and it says, hey, we wanna do this study. If we go through this entire project, and everything work, everything works perfect, I mean, a feasibility study probably costs us about a hundred grand, if you were to take. There is a six-thousand-dollar break fee. You say, hey, everything looks good, we're really excited, but we've had a change of heart. Uh, the, uh, you, there, there's a break fee that we could impose, and then in exchange for the break fee, you get all the, the work that we've done.
Okay, so, so, so it would cost us six thousand dollars if we choose?
Yeah.
After you've done all the work and fire department has done it.
And we're, and we're taking a risk there.
National grid, some money has been spent.
Yes.
And realistically, if we choose last minute to say, hey, thanks, but no thanks, we would have to pay C-Power
A six-thousand-dollar break fee, so.
Which is listed in that contract.
In the, in the LOI that I, I've shared. And, uh, I mean, from my perspective, I mean, I mean, that wouldn't be the ideal situation, I mean, I mean, wanna.
No, we, I think we wanna cover ourselves, right? We have to just sort of u- understand.
Yeah.
The commitment involved. Um, what size? For firstly, are UMass Amherst and Dartmouth up and running?
Um, UMass Amherst is on their second battery now. They installed a Borrego battery in twenty nineteen, and they commissioned, uh, a Tesla battery, a Tesla Megapack, in, uh, twenty twenty-two. So, they've been busy over there.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't have the details on what, what Dartmouth, but, um, yeah, I mean, is there, I have a, I have a picture of one. Should put it in the deck, but, uh, here's just, I'll, I'll just walk around quickly. I won't, I know I won't take too much time here, but, uh, this is a, I mean, this is not too far different of what the size of, that yours would be, but this is what, this is what it looks like.
Okay, now there's two units.
Yeah, yeah, back, back to back, back to back.
So we'll give you two units.
You, you would probably have two boxes here, at, at a one-point-eight-megawatt. So, it's just a, so it's, it's a cabinet. There it is. And, uh, the, the, it has a built-in fire suppression, fire detection system.
Mm.
If there's a, I know there's always questions about fire, and that's a valid question.
Maintenance building.
You actually can't put water onto, onto bad, so, these, 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 the, these enclosures are built to not allow anything out of them and let them burn out. Um, we would follow all the UL standards for safety. Um, just for, on a safety, on a safety note, um, our sister company who's installed these is a company called Endurance. They're the first to install a battery in New York City. And the New York City FD, the FDNY is some of the most str- strictest codes in the, in the, in the world, pretty much. And they were able to get through that red tape, so we would use those type of standards and then work our way down for what the standards would be here, so.
How far away from the actual building with these units that you just showed us be?
I mean, they can be eight feet, e- eight feet away from a, from a building. I mean, we wanna be as close to the transformer. Um, we have it enclosed, I mean, it's not, I mean, all these batteries, nobody can go in there and climb, climb in there. Everything's locked and everything like that, and we'd have the manufacturer come in twice, twice a year and do, do all their work to make sure they work right.
They do their upkeep.
Yeah, they, they do, we would have to do upkeep.
Be enclosed, like a fence around them or some?
Yeah, most likely a fence. They could just do bollards, I mean, but usually we do a fence.
Something so no one could just go and, you know.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna, we don't wanna turn it into a jungle.
No, I don't know. They don't wanna get.
So the school districts you're using are basically mass colleges?
No, I mean, I, I, I just use those two as example, 'cause I'm, uh, we have the D-CAM contract for St. Massachusetts, so I can say them. We have other private companies we're working with as well, but I just, confidentiality, I guess.
Any school districts?
Oh, school districts.
Like ourselves.
Do you know, um, do you know C.D. Melrose? Do you know Martha Grover? Every, a lot of people know her. Um, eh, eh, so, so Melrose is looking at this right now. Um, we've got a couple of, we have a couple of school districts, um, in Connecticut. Um, jeez, I'm blanking on their name right now. Um, oh, town, town, town of Guilford, and some of theirs, some of their schools are looking at it as well. Um.
You're not doing feasibility studies, you, they're, they're looking at it.
They're, they're, I mean, the feasibility study is, is looking at.
That's what we mean by looking at it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, 'cause, and then, and then we've, and then, yeah, yeah, so that, that's looking at it, and that's us studying it to make sure it, it's safe to run.
So they signed on to the feasibility study, they signed on to the contract with the possible
Yeah.
moving forward with it, or the six-thousand-dollar?
Yeah, and, and take, take the journey with us, and I, I can't promise anything now, but, I mean, we're doing our homework here and to make sure that this is something that's worth our time to look at. And we wanna have a dance partner that wants to have that, take that journey with us.
Shelf life of these batteries, was, I'm hearing a seven-hundred, up to?
Ten, ten years.
Ten years, so what happens after ten years?
Ten years, we pay to remediate the site. Take the battery out on our dime, we pave the pavement, re-saw the grass, or maybe even re-up if there's a new battery technology. There's always something cool happening every, every ten years, right?
Okay, so ten-year shelf life.
Yeah. And there's warranty for ten. They can, we, yeah, ten's usually what, what we land at.
Right, you guys remove them, you remediate the site, and it's sort of?
Send them, send it back to the manufacturer, recycle what they can.
Got you. If we wanna choose to move forward again, it would be a feasibility study.
In, in ten years, but who knows, well, if we're still around.
Okay, if we're still around, hold on. Now, that's something we don't wanna hear.
No, no, I, I'm not, as, not that, no, we, we've been around for twenty years. I'm talking about, like, I'm talking about us as a joke, as, as, as in the world, I don't know.
Okay.
If the moon hits us, everyone, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean that our company, I'm sorry. It was a bad joke.
You said you've been around for twenty years?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, and we've had the state.
Mostly in New England area?
Yeah, we've had the, yeah, we've had the, the D-CAM contract managing the state energy since two thousand and seven.
I like, I like the fact that you've mentioned schools, but I haven't heard anything other than schools. Have you been involved?
Yeah, well, I just, I was driving all over Connecticut this morning, and, uh, we're just finalizing our, our big wire company. Um, they have, they, they make wires, and their biggest issue is blips. Every time there's a blip, they lose, they lose thirty thousand dollars in wire.
Let me throw something at you. How about hospitals?
Yeah, uh, h- hospitals, eh, eh, the hospitals have been a big conversation because they have generators they don't trust to use, because every time there's a generator, then it, if the OR's running, so they don't wanna use the generators. They'd rather have a better resiliency with the battery. There's no blip with a battery. There's no transfer. The battery comes on in subcycle. Um, so yeah, we're, we're talking to some hospitals as well.
Now, when you come up with this assumed savings, where do these numbers come from?
So, so first we, first thing we do is look at your national grid bill.
Back to that.
And you have a, you have a, you have a, you have a G-three national grid bill. So now we know what your demand charges are. Then we model out what your facility do, does over the last twelve months. And then we, and we, 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 we calculate, well, what if we, what if we clip those demand charges? Knowing that, knowing the utilities' demand charge prices, we then under, better understand this cost here. By clipping those demand charges and extrapolating that over the ten years, we think we can save you fifteen thousand years on national grid demand charges. Capacity tags, you guys are actually doing capacity tag management already. Um, you, you, every, every year, one hour during the summer, when the grid is peaking, it sets twenty percent of your power bill. So right now, we've been, we've been helping Mi- Mike, and, uh, you curta- you curtail a portion of that already and save money. The battery would allow that to go to absolute zero and help you maximize. And the capacity prices, I'm using the three-dollar, uh, three-dollar price for capacity in the outer years. Over the last four years, capacity prices have been seven dollars, five, four, three-eighty. So I'm using a conservative outlook in the outer ten years. So if the past prices go crazy again, that, that column D there goes up. So I wanna give you something that lets under-promise and over-deliver.
So at peak time, they charge us a flat number of five dollars. So at peak time, they charge us a flat number of five dollars. We're gonna come off, hit the battery. They can't charge us, we're using our own battery store.
Bingo. The capa- capacity chart that one hour is worth so much of your bill, it's crazy. It's it's crazy, it's worth so much.
No, I just wanted to make sure, I.
Yeah.
Again, during peak, peak hours.
Yeah, every.
We wanna be using the battery and not.
Yeah, you wanna be using, the peak hour this year was uh September seventh from five to seven PM. That's gonna set everybody's tag, and luckily, you guys curtailed and did really well on September seventh, so you're gonna save on that. It wasn't, you didn't curtail the whole facility, cause it's not, that's not feasible, but with the battery, it is.
What about for our downtime, like, you know, where we're closed for vacations, we're closed, you know, not totally closed over the summer, but it's just a big difference of what's going on here in a battery base.
Yeah, because we have to interconnect, that means that the battery can create, can export to the grid. If there's not enough load at the facility, let's just say you have one megawatt load, the battery is one, it goes down to zero. Let's say you only have two hundred KW, really low. You can go from two hundred KW to negative eight hundred and export to the grid, and that all counts for performance. So we're not, uh we wouldn't be concerned if your load's abnormally low, if we need to use the battery during that time to perform for a program. Exporting is the same value as just load shedding.
Okay, so.
Sure.
So so we're a school here.
Yeah.
And we have twenty five hundred students, we have four hundred employees.
Mm-hmm.
We have to worry about the safety aspect. I understand FDNY and, you know, the, what does, what does that look like when they do their feasibility study? How are they studying the safety portion of the overall uh battery and maybe it catch you on fire or, you know, like, what does that look like?
Well, first, we have to go and get all the, get to pull the permits for this, for that area, and then we have to interface with the local, the local fire department on this and make them aware of that and and make sure they have a plan. I'm probably not, I'm not the, I'm I'm not the 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 battery engineer on that in regards to doing that kind of stuff, and that's stuff I can kind of pull you on what the process is, but it's really a coordination with. With the state, state and local officials and the fire department to let them know. We are using all the, they're they're called UL standards, which are strict, strict standards for batteries to be used in certain purposes, and that's done safely. We gotta make sure the battery is on a hundred fifty feet of a fire hydrant. Um and uh and then, and then other, we, there there's other things we have to look at in regards to um, regards to. Distance from the road or or distance from from, if there's an open window there, we c- we gotta be fifteen feet away, cause if they're, you know, like, people looking over the, cause there's all these different. Requirements we had to look at, that's just stuff on beyond what I've been saying here, there's just, it's a long, it's a long process just to make sure that we get buy-in from all the, from all the safety people that we can do this.
So it's state and local authority, so wh- wh- how about the state?
State and, yeah, state and local.
Fire marshal in, I mean.
St- state and local.
Okay, how does the state look at it? Where 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 do they come in? I mean, cause we're, you know, we're in town of Tingsborough, we're pretty small.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, it, town here, smaller fire department and things like that, so.
I think they would have to go by whatever the state fire marshal says for batteries, and then Tingsborough has to enforce whatever the state fire marshal says. So they would ha- they would have to go.
Okay.
He said something that intrigued me, though. He said, you gotta have a fire hydrant within.
Hundred fifty feet.
Yeah, and and then I also said that.
When I'm, when I'm thinking batteries, I'm thinking you should probably have foam available, too.
Yeah, th- they have a built-in fire suppression, fire detection system inside. It, they're they're all built in with that. And yeah, so it's, I don't know if it's foam, but there's some type of chemical that that's already built in there.
Yeah, wat- water and batteries don't, it's too.
Yeah.
Like an anse system, you know.
Yeah, so it 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 comes with that, and uh.
Fire that, thing goes up.
Yeah, and and quite honestly, some of these local fire departments, they haven't seen these yet, you know, but it's it's coming, and sometimes it's a little bit of education on, hey, this is what these guys are doing, and and they're they're trying to, they're trying to figure out some of the, some of the things to do it, so might as well. Go at the strictest levels that worked in New York and work our way to educate them on what's right, and then they'll have their questions and make sure that we're, we're doing things that make them, they have to make sure they have a. A a plan and a backup plan for if there's an issue happens, where they could come, so all all that stuff will be worked out, that's all part of the feasibility study that comes in maybe six months down the road, and we have a better idea what the interconnect is and stuff.
I'm sure if this comes to fruition, Mad Superintendent, they'll probably wanna speak with you, but I would be, I'd like to have, like, uh, the fire marshal over the part. Maybe speak to the board as well, when the time comes.
I mean, of course, I mean, I mean, that's, that's totally fine, I mean, we would have, we wanna get smarter about.
Just to alleviate any questions or fears the board might have because of what we are and who we are, uh and that we care, and we.
And sa- sa- safety is paramount, I mean, you 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 see stuff on the news and.
Yeah.
I don't know how, I don't know how those batteries are figured, you say you can't speak for those ones, but that's.
I would imagine if we go into the feasibility, everybody would meet to say this is where we need to be at.
Yeah.
The school, the state.
We'd like to.
The guidelines, I would think we'd have a little committee, there'd be a committee.
Yeah.
Of the company, the school, the state, the town of Tingsborough, the city of Lowell, cause they're right down the street also, so I would imagine that'd be all, that's above you, I would imagine, right?
That's above me. Yeah, it it comes into when we get our battery developer, they have a, they have a, they have a process of, maybe they'll back and forth the questions, and then they would mute the certain people, and. We keep the apprise along the way, and if those meetings had to happen, just make sure the right people are talking, that we wanna make sure.
I guess I would think that'd be part of the feasibility study, where everybody gets together, if the numbers crunch right and.
Yeah, and and it takes a while to figure out the numbers crunch right.
Right.
That's the thing, it take, it takes eighteen months, cause uh we have to, we have, we have to, the key thing is, the project could all, could go sideways if the utility says, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna charge you two million dollars to to redo your transformer.
Right.
We don't have that money for this project.
Right now, we both don't get the transformers that can act the corners.
Yeah.
It's not the easiest standard of work.
Yeah, it's not, it's not easy, so I'm 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 not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying this is all roses and 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 promises here, but the. But it, I mean, the numbers do look good, and we think that this is a financial project, and now we gotta do our homework, and and the 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 ask is if you wanna take that journey with us, and. And they don't have to figure it out today, I mean, obviously.
I still think we have some more internal dis- discussion to have, and uh but I appreciate the presentation.
I do, too. Anybody else say that?
No, it's very eye-opening. Um, yep, and I think uh it's something that we're definitely going to talk about, uh at a later date as a committee. But I think we'd like to have the whole board here, we're missing a couple of our uh school committee members, we'd like to have us all on board.
Not a problem.
But, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for this information and the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, thanks, guys, thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Joe, you've had had discussions, so uh.
We've had some brief discussions, but we wanted to present it here first. This is the first time that I'm seeing the presentation, so I think there is a lot that we need to discuss before making a final decision.
Oh, yeah.
It was discussed with Eric also.
Um, I've t- I've talked to him a little bit about it, I haven't given him any more than just.
He didn't see the presentation, so I think as as a group, we have to speak to the director of plant services, and as a board, I think we need to talk a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh further about the idea.
Yeah, you know, I'm concerned, like, you got these batteries, you know, the world we live in, some disturbed person or, or whatever student employee, whatever decides to come over. I wanna know what the safety issue is, you know, that that is gonna shut it down or whatever.
Well, no, like I said, to Fred's point, like, whatever they do, like, the state fire marshal, he's, when it comes to health, uh fire code, he's god.
Yeah. He's on outside, yeah.
Well, yeah, no, he's god in the st- in the state, and then Tingsborough has to enforce whatever he says.
Okay.
So I'm sure that Tingsborough and Lowell, both chiefs will get, they'll be.
They'll be all over.
They'll be in these meetings.
They'll be number safety meetings, well tried, that's.
Got you.
Well tried, they're not just gonna let them drop that.
Yeah.
Right, so if this feasibility study passes, it basically means all hands have looked at it.
The grid, uh national grid will be, it'll be, it's a lot bigger than.
Well, cause. They're just our decision.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Be surprised, they might wanna visit someplace that they already have. Something.
Yeah, what was that battery he showed us? Was that Pittsburgh State?
Chiefs travel to.
Was that the one over there that came?
Top in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, right, right, Dartmouth is a Pittsburgh, right. And it didn't look that large, but, yeah.
Mike, you get the excess of deficiency?
Yep, so next item on my agenda is the excess and deficiency filing, just letting you know that we've finalized our E and D filing for uh the end of twenty twenty, or fiscal year twenty-three. And eve- eve- even despite using one point seven million out of excess and deficiency, we're still projecting a balance of about one point three million in that, uh in the fund. Uh this puts us in a strong financial position, particularly where we knew we had a transfer to operating this year that's likely gonna close to excess and deficiency at the end of the year as well, um of one point five million. So when we certify into next year, barring any use, we should be pushing up that towards the uh, you know, the, close to that three million range, which is gonna be up. Up toward the upper limit that we can hold, which is a five percent. Um now that said, we've been talking about a building expansion project here on campus for a little while, and we uh we opened bids recently. Uh bid was about a million dollars above where we anticipated it. Um so we're working on with with the single bidder that came back on the project right now, um to see if there are any cost savings or any areas to to trim on that and areas of improvement on that cost side. Um but on the offside, there is nothing to trim there, um because that project is linked to our S R three funding of five million dollars of our S R three funding, we really had to try to look at ways to make sure that we can get that through. Or look at how we could potentially get that through, um and part of that might include using, um you know, on my quick estimate that I just kinda slammed together in the last couple of days. Um about five hundred and fifty thousand of E and D. Um so again, that would take us from like your one point three, it would dip it down for a year by the five, five point fi- or five, five hundred and fifty thousand plus what we normally use, about a hundred and fifty out of E and D, so. Call it seven hundreds, we'd dip down to about five, but then that one point five would close and would bring us back up to two million. Um s- and we'd likely have some other savings and some other interest income and things that will close in there, uh probably for another five, six hundred thousand, so I think it would put us. You know, it it lags by almost two years when you certify, because we certify now the twenty-three that would get used for the twenty-five budget. Um so by the time we got to like the twenty-seven budget, we'd be up, or or the money that would be used for the twenty-seven budget, the close of FY twenty-five. We'd be probably pushing back towards that three million range again.
Sounds like you're signing on to twenty-seven, Mike, congratulations.
I haven't signed anything, but thanks.
As far as. C O twenty-six.
Right, as far as our modular classrooms go, um um what's the timeline on having them essentially, if we sign on, let's just say at the end of the month?
Yep, so the bid, the bids were look, we're still doing some review right now, the architect's still looking at it, the OPM's got a copy, he's combing through it, making sure everything looks good there. Um but based on the proposal that was received, the timeline would still still have them open for August of twenty-four. So start of the next school year, uh fiscal twenty-five, we would have the buildings open and operational.
So it would happen fairly quickly?
Yeah, we'd be, we'd probably start groundwork, I don't know if they'd wanna fight the winter or hold off, because manufacturing is gonna take, you know, six, eight months anyway. Um so depending on what they know for manufacturing schedule, they'll be starting earthwork, I mean, they could start as early as the winter if they wanna try to fight frost and those type of things. I kind of anticipate that they might push.
More to March April.
Softer ground's easier to move, push it in March, April, um and then start placing and building through the late spring and into the summer.
Okay, well, that's all. Good to know, and it sounds like, uh, and there's only one bidder.
I did a.
Only one bidder. We had, we had questions up until the bid date from uh two very interested parties, and the third that would pop in and out of meetings, um eh, but only one, only one showed up.
Kind of local ones?
Uh actually, yeah, they're based out of Wyndham, New Hampshire, um so they are a relatively local company, and they're working on jobs. Um in Massachusetts currently, I know they're working in, I believe, Barnstable uh at the moment, and then I wanna say they had another job in. I get it wrong, I wanna say somewhere further south in like a Norwood area, maybe, um but they had another few jobs going in Massachusetts currently, and they've done. Um some other jobs throughout the state, so there were some local references uh within their bid package.
As large, as large as ours?
Um none, none quite as bi- this big. Um they had some up in the two million, two and a half million range. Um nothing that was into the fives on the reference list anyway, but that could have just been local references, they might have larger installations further away.
And needless to say, bids have closed.
Yep, yep, nothing's closed.
Okay, thank you.
So can I get a motion for the excess and division?
Uh don't need a motion, just, that was just an informational session for you. Um if 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 after we iron everything out with the project, we need to use excess and deficiency, uh then we'll need a motion, but that'll likely be part of next year's budget cycle.
Okay.
Report in progress.
Yeah, just a, just a where we're at. Uh so next item on my agenda is the approval of the wellness policy. Um so we have a, I had the first meeting of our wellness committee since my time here at Greater Well Tech, and being the chair of that committee, we. One of the first things we had to address was during our last food service review, they noted that our policy hadn't been updated in many years.
Yeah.
So it it needed to be addressed, we're supposed to hit it every th- third year by law, so um knowing that we have another review coming up with the Department of Ed, uh Food Service Group, probably, I don't think it's next year, I think it's. Uh it's either next year or the year after, um we had to really step it up and make sure we were in compliance and we had everything in place. Um so we put together the wellness policy that was provided to everyone, it addresses things like the um most, a lot of the legal stuff, the national school lunch program requirements. Um what can, when can food be sold in the school, um what what can be sold in the school, what can be done for fundraisers. Um what our uh health and um wellness curriculum is in the classroom, what extracurriculars we have, what policies we have in place for around athletics, those types of things. Um school nursing, how school nurses operate in the school, what their duties are, how they operate. Um and just uh an overall aspir- aspirational statements in places about um what types of things we would like to see happen in the school. And it was, it was nice that we uh had the policy uh ready and eh, some of the aspirational things that we had in there, talking about farm-to-table uh food and. Local grown and growing onsite and those types of things, um they ju- just lined up to what we're, what we've been talking about the last month or so, and like, we got some grants coming up that we've been applying for, and. You know, everything's coming together, and it's not just words on paper, we're putting into action um the things that we've put together in this policy.
I suppose the top program, doing the herbs and stuff for the.
Yeah, we, we got some cool stuff coming, too, we're looking at some indoor, indoor gar-. Yeah, we're looking at some indoor gardens that are like self-contained gardens, that'll produce for the cafeteria. Um and our cafeteria actually took some of the, I don't know, did you guys see the Tops food program?
Yeah, I saw it, yeah.
So they had some beet salad or arugula salad or something that the Tops could grew that then got served in the cafeteria, so they've got, got some cool stuff going on.
Cool. Pretty good. We need motion for this, yeah?
I do need a motion on this.
We were tapping the maple trees out there a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me make a motion. Motion approved the wellness policy?
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Babu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Yes.
That's all for my report tonight.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
That was, we did the policy and procedure then, right?
That's correct.
It hadn't been done in many years, and it now, it's it's almost another ten years now.
Well, we don't wanna say that, Mr. Moran, it's 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 getting close, it's not there yet.
Do we have anything on the old business? We have one thing on the new business, is the uh facilities naming committee member appointment, and the facility naming committee currently has three seats, they're inspired. Uh I'm gonna appoint myself as a school committee member seat, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jill, who'll point the other two, which would be the uh administrator and current teacher seat.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, so I would ask, or I will be appointing, uh Mr. Mark White in the administrative one-year position seat. And I will be appointing Mr. Brian Martin to fill the one-year uh teacher uh position on the committee.
On that facility, is good.
Yes.
Yeah, so any ready questions?
Well, that's good. Well, not my question, just a, I guess a general comment, um I'd like to see either this board or maybe like a review committee. Look at the policy, all the bylaws for this naming committee, and uh just go over it extensively, s- bring stuff up to date, maybe change, you know, just see if any. Whereage needs to be changed or anything like that, and um as the chair of that committee, I don't think we'll have a meeting until we do this. I'd like to see this first, and then we'll go from there.
You started to do some of that.
Yeah, but I think we need an extensive look.
Well, I think, I think as the chair of the naming committee, that falls under your purview, right?
Yes, so that's what I'd like, well, that's what I'd like to.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We have, we, we can leave our first emotions, any reporters off committees, and the motion or adjournments?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Babu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchin?
Yes.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll see you Wednesday.